Of Tuesday, July the eighth. It looks like everybody is represented except the Chair of Commerce is not represented today. Notice the meeting was properly posted on July seventh. Item number one, discussion possible action regarding minutes of June the tenth.
I will move the minutes from June ten.
Aye. We've got a motion in the second to approve the minutes of June the tenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Right, item two, discussion possible action regarding any items currently on the BET watch list for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. This is the final list from last year, so this one will be dispensed with today. All right. No action needed on item two? Well, we usually do a closeout.
So I never have.
I don't think we have either, but I thought about that.
Never really marked one final and read, we just kind of. But since there were some items so late in June, I just thought, and with everything going on, we do.
Let's just, we don't really need any action because we're.
Normality.
Yeah. See here, item three, discussion possible action regarding employees' benefits. On.
This is, it was the good news. Good news is new fiscal year. But we're on the month of the. You know, we're hoping for all.
When everything's good.
We're gonna run out of money by August. No, so far, so good, two weeks in. So what I did is just do a summary of the last fiscal year and attach, and, and. Text out to you, this is just kind of where we ended the year at on medical, really good news. If you look at it compared to last fiscal year, same amount of weeks that were paid, so it's apple to apple comparison. This, this last fiscal year, we ended thirty four thousand less than the prior fiscal year. And then if you look at twenty two, twenty three, we were thirty four thousand under per week compared to that. So medical's looking really good. Now, on to prescriptions. You know, it's a bigger number, of course, but there's always details, doubles of the details. We paid a month more prescription claims this last fiscal year than we did the prior fiscal year, so. That's really the big reason for the difference. So we're up about eleven percent on prescriptions. And then I, I did our budget, our biggest reimbursements we received, you know, to pay expenses besides premiums and transfers. Stock loss, we were a little under what we expected, pretty close. Refunds, we went over a hundred and nineteen thousand over what we expected. Prescription rebates is a big saver this year, saved us. We're transferring extra money in, we went about one point one over what we expected. And that's really due to the county pharmacy. And then, of course, COVID, that's ramped way down. And that's one reason up here on the medical, why we were so high that year against COVID claims, but overall, if we net those out, we're about two hundred and eighty eight thousand over, which is very good because we budgeted for increases in medical prescriptions.
Got a personal release ready for us?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
And realize that, in practice, I wouldn't hear that.
Sure, sure.
So it was out. My wife tried to give a script early in July and called the county pharmacy and they said, we don't have any money yet, so cancel.
Yeah, there's about a week's time where they had to transfer money due to our, our processes.
Right.
They're not simple, they take a lot of time. Just for example, June's payroll that happened in June, we don't even get that money allocated until August budget board. So we're waiting months, but the BET did transfer some money to take care of that thing, so it went about a week until the transfer happened.
Okay.
But that's been solved. We started the pharmacy this year with plenty of money encumbered.
Yeah.
And getting more this, this week for them, so they'll be loaded up, ready to load prescriptions, and we'll do that every month, so that.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Given the, the increase in the pharmacy numbers, this is, this is a really good report.
And that, and that's really just a month extra. It's just a really big timing issue, too.
Yeah.
We're way ahead of paying claims in the fiscal year, because I can remember we were creeping towards the end of last fiscal year, scrambling to get money, pay stuff, so we had a lot of stuff to put into the new fiscal.
Are we still waiting on some rebates? Or from last fiscal year?
Oh, yeah. They, they kind of trickle through every quarter.
Right.
So they, they release them in kind of sections, so they release part of it, and then they wait till the next quarter, release the prior, so we're still, you're getting rebates every quarter. And look, look at that number to kind of keep going up as we go.
John, what do you think, speaking of the county pharmacy? What do you think our penetration has been like? I know we've seen growth in there. Do we think that all of our county employees are fully aware of the increased benefit that's available there? And if not, then I think it might do us some good to try to work on some information efforts with our employees to let them know that we're. That we have the, the pharmacy number one. But a lot of people know that we have a pharmacy, but they may still think that it's, you know, kind of the way we were doing it before, it was just maintenance drugs and not some of the more expensive things that we could really see a benefit by driving the, the business towards the county pharmacy.
Great, great point, and we already got that in the works, actually. So going forward each quarter, and affirmed our X is about to mail, targeted mailing's out to those people who haven't used the county pharmacy since we went live, those people that aren't, maybe not aware or haven't looked at their mail. So every quarter, they're gonna say, hey, did you know you could get generic, name brand specialty drugs at no cost to the county pharmacy? This is how you do it. And every quarter, we're gonna target those people who haven't used it and are filling drugs other places.
Well, I know you may not have exact numbers now, but off the top of your head, can you kind of guesstimate what the utilization rate is?
It's big.
Yeah.
Maybe about close to forty percent, which is huge.
That is, that is good.
Huge.
So maybe what we can do, I, I don't know what you guys are like. My house, a lot of times, the snail mail stuff. You know, having older kids, you never know who's checking the mail, where, what ends up getting, and, you know, whatever, so not everybody sees, or you just see something you think. You put it in the trash pile or whatever. I think as we have team meetings and staff meetings and that kind of stuff, whether it's elected officials or, or departments, as they're having those meetings individually with their staffs, if, if that's kind of brought up. And, you know, kind of make that a, a focused effort to make sure that everybody's aware, because it truly is a win-win benefit for our employees and.
Such a win-win, and what I'll do also is when, when they're getting ready to mail those flyers out poorly, I'll, also email it out to everybody, have departments post it, and you'll have something to hand out to your members, too, just to remind them. And another big thing that we've been working on since February is, you know, our GLP one drugs are off the charts, you know, we spend lots of money on those, and the county pharmacy has a lot of those prescriptions, you know, Zempic, all those would go, all that stuff. And long story short, our pricing isn't that great right now, because we don't have much purchasing power, we haven't been in business long, but once we had about six months with a proven track record, then we can get a better governmental contract with McKesson, so in August, I'm gonna start that process. And get way better pricing on some of those expensive drugs that are driving our costs. Way lower price.
Perfect. So we may want to look at literature as well when we have the open enrollment this year. We'll do.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate all your help.
Thank you.
Is your motion received and reported? It's on here. Your second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second to receive the report, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And without objection, the Chair will ask the clerk to make the document that was passed out. All right, item number four, discussion possible action to create a new BET watch list for FY twenty five, twenty six.
We have a blank one attached. There were some items during our, when we were budgeting in the spring that we said we'd add to the watch list, so I thought we could discuss those. One other thing on the item that was funded, it's gonna be on the second page, it's the two hundred and thirty thousand, twenty four dollars and seventy cents. This was voted on by budget board, but when we made the motion and they voted to fund it, make the transfer, it was never indicated if it's coming up on one-time funds or ongoing. So your first page, the amount at the top should be that much less, I just didn't know where to take it from. It didn't preclude the transfer, because the only place that's really tracked is on these watch lists. I mean, it was still out of the reserve and the transfer did get done. Just for our purposes, for track.
Unless it's encumbered as a whole, remember that we're only, we're reimbursing them for invoices that they submit every month. So would it be an ongoing? Well, I, I think.
I think we can court services as a whole.
Yeah, I, I think it depends on how we're looking at it, looking at it and say, well, this is the cost of what the program is, and we don't want any further sharpening of the pencil, figuring out what's gonna. Yes. To move forward, if, if, if we don't want any of those discussions, then I think it would be ongoing. If it was, hey, we want to continue to look at this to figure out, i- is this actually what the cost should be going forward? Do we want to look at other avenues of, you know, trying to save money here, save money there, and still look at the program and make potential changes down the line? Then I would think it being out of one-time funds would be the more appropriate. So it, it kind of depends on what the, the philosophy is of those around the table.
In twenty four, twenty five, when we bid short of, we did take it from one-time funds, that was the three hundred and twenty five.
Because we were gonna look at it and figure out how we can try to get it to where we thought it was gonna be in the first place, which was a money saver, not an increase. So that's why we, my recollection is that's why we did it under one time, because it was like, don't anticipate this additional money moving forward. I think we're kind of in that boat right now. Do we want the message to be, hey, don't worry about it, this two thirty is just part of your budget moving forward, and we'll just have discussions about increases or, you know, whatever. Then it would be ongoing, but if it's, hey, we're still gonna kind of take a look at this and figure out what we're gonna do, then it would be a, a one time.
I have two thoughts on that.
Go ahead.
The first thought is, I don't want to have that same conversation for a third year. At all. I mean, so that's my personal opinion. Secondly, while I can appreciate the sharpening of the pencil, as you say, we didn't sharpen the pencil on any other department this last year, we just gave everybody whatever they asked for, so I don't think we should treat this any differently. So.
I'm just kind of thinking along the same lines, but kind of a combination. Saying that, yes, this is part of your budget, but there is no more sharpening of the pencil. This is a not-to-exceed amount, you're not giving us that.
I, I'm, I would support that. And it never precludes us from looking at cost savings.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
The question being, can we determine that here? That we did, yeah. This part directed to budget.
That's kind of my, we didn't make a choice, so.
So I didn't know if we needed to take it back to budget board.
Did last month, did y'all give money for ankle bracelets to the DA's office, on that part of court services and all that?
They are keeping twelve sixty, and they ended up, thanks to Jessica, closing encumbrances and stuff, there's a good hundred thousand in that fund, so that's gonna be an ongoing fund. And whatever the DA is gonna collect, she'll be depositing in and there, so hopefully that's a self-contained for the GTS.
All right, thank you.
As far as the DA is concerned, that is self-sustaining.
Okay. She just didn't know what to do with it, right?
But team, we maxed out. Once it's out, it's gone, it's gone.
Okay. Put that out, thank you.
Do we need to take it to budget board?
I would think so. I mean, but couldn't we take a recommendation?
Right, sure, sure.
Take it out or reserve it, what you're saying.
Well, I'll make it out.
Well, it's all in the first, yeah.
But it's just a matter of ongoing or one time.
Right.
I will go ahead and make a motion to recommend a budget board to make this funding as part of ongoing funds from general funds. I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second to make a recommendation to budget board, just from an accounting standpoint on our watch list, to allocate the two hundred and thirty thousand, twenty four dollars and seventy cents that budget board transferred from reserve to court services to be allocated on our sheet from the ongoing portion, not the one time. Is that clear?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Anything else on the watch list?
I didn't know if we wanted to consider some of the items that we talked about to add. The first one being the CARES audit, we know that's still out there, we had five hundred thousand on last year's watch list.
Okay, we have a motion to add five hundred thousand dollars to the watch list for CARES audit.
So moved.
Okay. You have a motion in second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it.
The next item we talked about during budget season was a COLA at three point five percent for one point eight million.
Okay, is there a motion to add the three point five percent?
Like the motion that we change that from COLA to merit, like we did last year.
Well, last year, we didn't classify it as a, as a term. I, I think the, the problem that we've gotten into in the past is when we send the message, I mean, the, the three and a half percent is to keep our employees at the same spending level that they were before, that, I mean, we're not giving out raises, so to speak, and I think it's kind of a messaging thing more than anything else. So my recollection was, the year before, we didn't classify it as COLA, we classified it as merit. I believe last year, when we did it, we didn't really classify it, so.
Didn't we do a hybrid one time, too?
Yeah.
Percentage.
Percentage of one or percentage of the other.
Merit.
I think the thought behind doing, classifying as a merit is that it just leads it up to the discretion of each elected official, and I would support that also.
I mean, we could always do a COLA slash merit, it's just sitting on a watch list, and then we hash it out when we make the recommendation after we see our supplement. Yeah.
But if you have a bucket.
A bucket.
For, a bucket for merit, and then are some employees, based on their merit, eligible for higher percentage than others?
Sure.
Yeah, it would be up to the.
Like, like if we had a three percent merit, an elected official could give somebody one percent or two percent, or the full three.
It's up to the discretion.
Right.
It just means that you're, you're gonna get a three for three and a half percent of your salary budget to spend it on.
Yes, what we used to do was we had, we were tracking both COLA and merit, so we would do a, a COLA adjustment, and then we would also look at merit, and then the merit would be the discretionary to give out based upon annual reviews and that kind of stuff. But the, the COLA piece was, and it, the idea was to keep employees across the board at the same spending power that they, the previous, that they were at the previous year.
Well, for purposes of the watch list, can we just do what you said, just do COLA slash merit, and we can hash it out in September?
That your motion? I'll make it.
We, we do currently have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My motion's just for merit.
Are you willing to amend your motion to COLA slash merit?
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion in second to title it merit increase. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm actually gonna be a no, I prefer the, the switch, but, or the, a hybrid, but I'll, I haven't talked about that one.
And I prefer the hybrid.
Marcy, you shaking your head?
I feel strongly, boy.
I've got a request to do a roll call.
I'll be taking on.
District two. Or.
Aye.
District three. What are we doing?
Roll call vote.
Roll, roll call vote. Yeah, I have to, I have to go with my commissioner and merit. Okay. District one?
Um, hybrid is what we go for, so I would say.
What, in, instead of, I know there's a motion in second out there, I'm just gonna throw this out there, to get some unanimity, unanimity, whatever that word is.
You, you spoke too much.
What about if, instead of being merit slash COLA, if it was just salary adjustment?
At the discretion of the elected official.
Well, it would just be salary adjustment, because all it is, is it's going on the watch list, and it's just a title.
So you're saying, when we actually go to recommend, then we would.
Yeah, when we go to recommend, we would have the nomenclature there, whether it's merit, whether it's COLA, or whatever, but we're just, on our watch list, we just see that there's a salary adjustment, and what that dollar amount is, we're gonna be looking at moving forward.
But it still needs it to be sour, and it possibly could be a spice, not salary increase.
Well, we're just talking about nomenclature to get it on the list. All of these specific discussions are things that we can have. Down, right.
Well, let's just finish out the vote. Okay, second.
And the only reason why I bring that up is because it's, it sounds like there's at least some that are in favor of, and maybe eventually would be in favor of, that the nomenclature being merit, but right now, they're not, but they, they're supportive of the dollar amount being on there for, in the future, but just not that particular title that's on there. So, okay. It was just a suggestion, sounds like it's not a good suggestion, I guess, so we got through.
Kristi. I'm a no.
What was district one?
So district one. It is actually a hybrid.
Salary adjustment.
Salary adjustment, I mean, that's just fair.
So then are you a no on the merit? Okay. So you're a no on the merit. Kristi?
I'm starting today. Uh, I'm a no on merit.
Yes. Marcy? Fails for three. Okay, is there another motion?
You gotta have five votes.
I'm hoping that we can get seven.
But I'm just saying, if the, the votes, if we all vote the same again, still get.
Well, no, on this, I think it's just a majority of those here, there's sevens and before.
Eight members of the board you gotta have. It's like budget board.
No, the budget board, it's like that for certain items on budget board, but not all items. There's some in statute.
Budget.
Statute addresses certain issues where it is a majority of those seated, so.
They trust you on that, too.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we add a salary adjustment of three point five percent, which is one point eight.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in the second.
Who, who is taking the second?
Okay, we'll do a roll call again. District two?
No.
Or.
No.
District three?
Aye.
District one?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, fine, too.
Seven, we just.
Yeah. And the next item that we talked about was the CJA amount, of course, back in the spring, we were looking at eight with two million, given their budget that they passed out yesterday, it was five million, eight hundred and twenty two thousand, four thirteen. We want to add that. How much does it add now to the last one? I'll second. Can you, can you just give us a second? Okay, so what was that for, I'm sorry, I missed it. Uh, CJA. I just put CJ, labeling it anymore, that's.
Yeah, that was five point eight.
Uh, five million, eight hundred and twenty two thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars, by the eight, two, two, four, one, three.
Where, the, 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 the motion is not.
It's just added to.
It's added to the.
Right, because the, the title is not shortfall, not budget shortfall.
I, I just.
You're CJA.
I was making motion to CJA.
Yeah. I thought I had heard you say budget shortfall, I just wanna make sure.
I think I did, but then I, I know if I just.
Okay, yeah, we don't know if it's budget shortfall or not.
Okay, so I'm gonna. Motion, please second. I second. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Ayes have it.
And the last item that I recall from my notes, it was the employee's benefits amount, this is in the cash transfer, where we didn't fund it all, just so we could get that million in reserve, eight hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. I just have it labeled employees' benefits. Eight oh six, eight oh four? Eight oh six, eight four oh. I'll make a motion to add that to the watch list, I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, has have it. Anything else we want to start the year off? All the ones.
Something up for discussion, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because I don't know whether this should be something for this fiscal year or next fiscal year, or a combination thereof. When you, we know that when the BCC is completed in December of twenty twenty six, we will have to have staff on January twenty twenty seven.
What's it for?
The behavioral care staff. And that's gonna be five to ten million. Of course, that's another discussion with where else that may come from. Just putting it out there.
They're, the good news. So is it gonna be a sixty-bed facility or?
Sixty, sixty.
That's all those deals where you have to have so many employees per client, is that correct?
Yeah.
Or like one person to watch six people, and something like.
But I'm talking to all your medical staff, everything.
Yeah. Heat, air, water, all that stuff, food, yada, yada. And you guys already have that, where'd you get that number?
Just from other entities, similar facilities.
That's fair.
Well, I think it's a good point.
Well, I think it's a good point.
Just something to think about, whether we have it on the list now or not, and wait till next year. To start next fiscal year, to start thinking about that, you've got six months.
What was saying how? Is that something that we could put on the watch list, even though the need for those funds won't actually be in this fiscal year?
I I I think traditionally, what we use the watch list for is as we move through the fiscal year. Stuff's gonna come up and say say Marcy has something that they're needing some extra money for. And they come and ask for it, we have this watch list that we can say, okay. We understand you're asking for fifteen thousand dollars for this, and it seems important, but we got these other things that we're aware of that we're tracking. Do we wanna make that call? Is it too early to make that call because we potentially have these other needs? And can we meet these other needs and meet that need? It's more of a during that year um analysis. So that we don't, you know, wake up in April and be like, oh, we totally forgot about eight hundred thousand dollars for employee benefits. And now we don't, we've spent all of that those reserve dollars on other things. So I I don't necessarily think that we would need it on the watch list. But I do think as we're making considerations on budgeting. Ongoing expenses, we need to keep that.
Well, let me ask this, is is the is the general fund the default? Are we working on other funding? So what makes this different than the new jail and?
So that would be the other funding mechanism.
It'd be part of that, is that what you're saying?
I think maybe this situation might change if. If BOCC gets a little further down the road and you know kind of where you're at, what funding options you have or you don't have. Then you have kind of a solid game plan and you're like, we've exhausted all these other things. We're gonna have to get six point two million dollars from general fund, then once we're a little bit further down the road. Maybe we put it on there, but I do think that's a great point, considering, yeah.
Uh is this the year, is twenty five twenty six the year we gotta do a couple more courtrooms and judge, or is that the next fiscal?
I have that on my list.
Is that for this fiscal year then?
No, JJC will not be completed until next year. And I think this is additional judges and additional courtrooms beyond the ones that are already.
We have, we have one coming in.
Yeah, they are they are expecting possibly two next year.
Yeah, we have one new judge this year coming out October first. This business co- court deal, which. Read about it in the papers, right now is in front of the Supreme Court to see if it's even this. That's a debate between the legislature and government. And if that comes in, we all know it's a separate building.
I think that one's that one's gonna be tough, because isn't it just two business courts, one in Tulsa and one in Oklahoma County? And then, so you're gonna have, if we're gonna pay to build courtrooms. And if we're gonna pay for all the things necessary for those judges, not the judges salaries, but all of those other things. And it's for business court people coming from Logan County, Canadian County, all over. Then we are taking Oklahoma County have loan tax dollars, not only to benefit the state, but this is to benefit other counties as well. I just, I don't think, I think that's gonna have to, my uneducated opinion would be that that would have to be something completely separate.
Well, that's that's what nobody knows, right? So we we are aware of the one new judge that comes in October.
I mean, maybe it could be located here, but I'm talking about from a funding strain standpoint, I don't think.
Courtroom space, who knows, or if it's off site, and if it's off site, do they need a law library, do they need this, do they need that? The possibilities are endless and that's gonna be a Supreme Court.
Yeah, I don't I don't I don't think they can push the cost of two business courts onto two counties to fund all seventy seven counties.
Yeah, so that's, you know, if you sue the state, though.
We're on your floor. What do you guys do actually? I wonder if they do it on the other side of the wall.
Anyway, so that's something to keep in mind, because we just don't know. The the one thing we do know is that it's the new judge that comes in October.
Now, in your budget, did you have the bailiffs and stuff?
We don't do bailiffs, but we do.
Paul, my recollection was the courtrooms that we were building were for the new judges that they got last year.
For Juby?
Yeah. JJC, yes. Yeah, so. I'm talking also about the one. That'll be on four.
That'll be invisible.
That's for the new special judge, temporary courtroom.
That we utilize uh the court space at the jail?
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Why not?
Uh it's in the basement in the release, from what I recall. When they did Terry Nichols trial, they tried that up there and they had to move it and they left it to McAllister.
Good point. There's courtroom space over there.
In the new jail, there's supposed to be one or two courtroom.
But two, yeah.
That's gonna be really. Efficient, because they can bring them out of the cell, bring them up to the courtroom. So we have that, we also have removing now up on five, if you're ready, construction. And we'd like to look at the one time monies to kind of fit with some newer furniture. The one time monies, we, I just got this. Ten minutes, fifteen minutes before this meeting started. Uh worst case scenario would be not exceed four hundred. That's it, that's if we completely did new chairs, we gotta have new desks, because the desks.
So was your, did with the the ARPA funding for the social distancing, does that not include any other? Really?
The ARPA won't allow that, that's what we were told. Was fifty put in your? We have that, we're not just furniture, but run of carpet. Computers, it's cabinet.
Um if there is potential ARPA money that's available, I would suggest making another run. I do not recall ever the question being asked nor answered of a censure that. In remodeled space, that desks and stuff could not be.
That's what we were told.
I- i- in in, that may have happened and I just wasn't aware of it, I don't recall that.
Yeah, and the thing about it is right now, and just FYI, this is unnecessary information. For you guys not gonna buy groceries right here or get coffee. We have L shaped desks right now, the way the space is designed is for square. Square desk, so they won't fit.
And the square desks are necessary to fit in the space so that you get the social distancing requirement to meet ARPA guidelines. That's why I think desks would be an appropriate expenditure because.
If you guys can pull that off, we're all.
What is your blue day?
March. So it's down there. It'd be good enough. We were told. I can't tell you, I can't source it for you, but that's what we were told, so.
So March moved a bit more, he said four hundred thousand for all your furniture?
Yep.
So are you?
I have the quote right here.
Are you making a a motion to add the four hundred thousand for furniture to the watch list?
Yeah, if it's ARPA or one time monies, either way, ARPA would be one time monies.
Second, yeah, we got a motion and a second, add for the court clerks, uh space, four hundred thousand dollars for. New furniture on the fifth floor. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, let's have it.
And I don't have the numbers yet on the, sorry, I'm in a period that. Consider my second day back, what it would cost to put a clerk in. For the new judge and what it would cost to put clerks in for the business court. Because we're we're even doubted, is it gonna be one new judge, or is it, we start out with that, see how it goes. If they need two judges, if they need three judges, we just don't know. That that is just this magic thing out there that's totally dependent on the Supreme Court.
Did you write any in that into your estimates?
We didn't know if it passed, so.
And we still know.
Yeah, yeah, Supreme Court said it's not necessary, just do it with what you have in individual district courts. It it could, it could be a nightmare, I'm not saying for us, I'm saying for county. It's like Cody said, Baldwin County and Tulsa County gonna be handling stuff, seventy five other counties.
Outside of the business court, though, in in the anticipated. Uh amount for new judges, isn't it one special judge this year and one special one district next year?
I couldn't, I don't know, oh, I'm sorry.
I think that's what Judge Arden said.
He's been hopeful.
Yeah, well, he was hopeful for two specials this year, the only one.
Yeah, so that's the legislature, they they some like to say the objects.
So with a special judge on October one, we have to do a clerk in the space, or no?
Yeah, we have to do the temporary courtroom in four. And chambers and office space for the judge and the clerk and bail. Would these be discussions that we would probably wanna have more in depth at September supplement time instead of. On the watch list for now, because it sounds like there's a lot up in the air.
There is, and uh we do know, though, that October one, we got that new judge coming in. So if you wanna talk about it in August, it might be easier.
Now, the new judge coming in, was that budgeted?
No, because we didn't know if that would get through.
That's true, that's being going to be at least discussed initially in infrastructure on the twenty first. So I'm, does the legislature and others understand when they make decisions last minute? The budgetary impacts that it makes down the line, I mean, don't.
I don't think they do.
That history is not.
Like I said, this all comes down to the state, when they say, okay, we've got this extra money, the legislature gave us, we're gonna give up. Tulsa County a new judge, we're gonna give Oklahoma County a new judge. We don't know until the state tells us what they're gonna do and what they.
Okay, so.
We're at there, Marcy.
We've got the four hundred thousand on the watch list, or you requesting anything else on the watch list at this time?
Uh just maybe a court clerk for the new judge October, and I don't have numbers.
Well, we need a number to put on a watch list. Where does the four hundred come from?
I'll bring it in August.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Where does the four hundred come from?
A quote off the state bid list on on putting our office on the fifth floor, all right here.
Oh, that's for F F. The uh, I think I have the numbers upstairs, but I think the temporary courtroom. And build out for chambers is somewhere around sixty. I've got that upstairs.
So we can revisit this in August? We won't revisit.
Brandon did ask me to bring up, he could be here at another meeting, and. The fifty five thousand that we had on the watch list last year for the IT for the three sixty five. For our reserves, we would, Sheriff's Office would like that to go onto the watch list. Uh to be considered for funding at some point, maybe September supplement.
That's several years ago, right?
Last year was when it was put on the watch list.
I thought it was something from like three years ago.
Yeah, and we had moved the. The three sixty five, those um funded, the the Microsoft stuff over to IT. And then IT added the, for the full time employees, moved that funding over to IT. So we had, we had moved money from the sheriff's budget over to IT previously for that. But the, for the reserves, that has not been funded.
How much was it, Chris?
Fifty five. So, and it was a security issue that Dane brought up. I don't wanna get too in depth and on. Well, I I can, you know, i- if anybody wants to start me off on about the security issues, I just, it's technology, security. Yeah, so. Well, are we gonna, are we gonna go ahead and need a a motion to put that on, just the build out? Temporary build out on.
On what?
The watch list, even though I don't have the exact number with the agent player.
Talking about fourth floor?
Bringing the numbers back, you know.
Yeah, I thought we were talking waiting until August on those, that that's why I moved on, I I apologize.
That would be fine, it's not coming till. P or G. That's pretty fun. We know it's coming, we know it's coming.
They bring, were you just bringing it up? Did Brandon want us to add it to the watch?
Yeah, he wanted it, did the watch, so I told him to bring it up.
Okay, I will make the motion to add the item for the Sheriff's Office um to the watch list for fifty five thousand. And I will grab the exact same description, I don't have that. Oh, I found it.
Yes, Mark.
I gotta pull that, okay.
All right, second.
Yeah, that exact same description.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let's have it. Anything else? All right, sounds like we've got the beginnings of a watch list for twenty five twenty six this whole year.
That's a lot on there.
Yep. All right, item five, discussion possible action regarding procedures and timing of general fund revenue supplement for that one twenty five twenty six.
Um I put this on there, it was language that we had about this time last year that Cassie had ran across and just asked. And um I thought it was good to have it on there. What I passed out today is kind of what I wanted to talk about most. Before we get into the supplement, um. Yes, I'm sorry, I do. So. This is kind of a history of our reserve. So I started this spreadsheet a long time ago with the total reserves after September supplement. This recently, someone had brought it up and said that it wouldn't be starting, so that's why I haven't gone back and filled it. Um the things in yellow are anomalies, those are gonna have um the ARPA money that ping in. So eight million of this ten was that one time money, the ARPA interest on the share. Now, seven million of that eight is in here, so this one, I'm still researching.
That was, that would have been cares dollar, wouldn't it have been?
I don't know how it would have got to the reserve.
Because remember we allocated like forty million dollars over to the jail, the jail wound up sending money back. No, that's.
Something different?
No, yeah, no, that is. That's ARPA interest in the. that's ARPA interest in the sheriff's salaries. I'm talking about back in twenty twenty, there was an allocation given to the jail trust, it was roughly forty million dollars to do some projects, and they weren't able to spend all of that, and so they sent money back in, I think it was December of twenty twenty, somewhere around there, so I'm, I'd go for sure, but. Yeah, I would think that it would probably be something like that.
So what I was trying to point out in the yellow were the ones that had these huge pots of one time money. Um, the ones in green, I just highlighted those, those were past that half years, so that's how we ended up. But the main thing I wanted to show today was that total reserve after supplement, kind of going down this list and looking at these numbers, bold is the high, and once you take out the one time monies, this is gonna be a low of one point nine million. So when we're starting September, we're talking about five point eight million for jail, everything else we just added to the watch list, of course, not knowing, um, knowing that our highest total reserve after supplement was five point nine, and our lowest, again, once you met that out, would have been one million nine hundred and eighty three thousand. So I just wanna be really, as we go in, again, we don't know the numbers, but I'm not seeing big one time monies. Shy of what's in here. But I just, I just want us to really watch what we're doing when we start making decisions, I just thought it was a good exercise to look at kind of the history of the reserve, that knowing that we, it, we know it's gonna be all over the map.
Well, and it, I think it reiterates why and the important, and the importance of us making the adjustment on our watch list, delineating between one time monies and ongoing monies and making that decision when we do a transfer from reserve for a particular purpose, whether it is out of the ongoing money or the one time. Because otherwise, it gives you a false sense of security that you have these dollars that are always gonna be there and they're not. Christie used the appropriate term, there are dollars.
Yeah, those last several years, from like twenty two to thirty twenty five, if you take out the, the large amount, they're smaller than ever, so you're talking about.
Back in nineteen twenty, did the county just pay any P P P stuff?
You mean twenty twenty?
I was like, you're pre-dating me a little.
He's getting so serious.
So twenty twenty.
Well, obviously was around, so was there anything the county qualified for with P P P?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's where I think some of that could be from, we got a, a, a pretty large infusion of capital from the federal government via CARES dollars, and that's what, when Jessica is coming around talking about the CARES audit, it's associated with those dollars we got back at, at that particular period of time. So we got money and we purchased P P E, we did um, some temporary adjustments for individuals, um, we did some um, small business loans, uh, well, we didn't do that, we gave money to O I A to do that, we gave money to Home Finance Authority to do rental assistance and stuff, so. I, I'm thinking that may be some rollover dollars from those, may, maybe it's not, but.
And we may be surprised in September, I'm just looking from about twenty two, twenty one, twenty two on, how it just started dwindling. From four million, four point three, three five, two two, and then the one nine, we did have a long time, so.
How was treasure, treasures resale compared to the last couple of years?
Um, it was one million seven, I think it was two hundred and seventy seven thousand more than the previous year, but I can, I can read that.
But not, it, not a game changer.
No, 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 now, it'll take more of a hit next year, because that'll catch up to us being funded for a full twelve months at a resell, so it won't be as big next year. But it's, it's a good, it's a good exchange.
It, it is, but it's something that when we took the general fund dollars that we were funding your office out of and we looked at reallocating that, because you guys are on the other, we're gonna have to keep that into consideration when we're looking at funding moving forward, because we won't have as much treasures resale into our supplement, it sounds like, um, what, twenty six, twenty seven?
Yes, that's.
Fair point.
That's all I had, and then I did know in procedures and timing, um, if we ever had, had our revenues by our August meeting. I can't remember, I'm brainless.
Yeah, memory serves correct. I think you guys kind of get those numbers towards the beginning of August and then we start scheduling special B E T meetings later in August, because you don't generally, if memory serves correct, you don't generally have all of that figured out by a regularly scheduled meeting in August. We're doing some specials towards the end of August to get those numbers.
I wonder if we should, if it was the same procedure for August, for Budget Board, we shoot per um, having the revenues, and then obviously we try to do Budget Board in September for the recommendation.
Marcy, can you, um, either you or mention it to my, at our regularly scheduled August meeting, give us an update on where you are on those projections and, if you have it, great, and go ahead and put it on the agenda and we can move forward with it, if not, if you can have an update for us, that way we can determine at that meeting when we can start scheduling some specials.
Sure. Yes, I will. That was all I had on my item, it was mainly just in that overview.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
We gotta be careful.
This document wasn't attached, so without objection, I'll ask the clerk's office to make it part of the record. I appreciate you providing that for us, Christie, that's very important information that can't just be glossed over.
We're still not rich, Dan.
Still not what?
I said, we're still not rich, Dan.
Give it time. Nothing, it's just wishful.
All right. Any other discussion on item five? If not, any citizens wish to participate? Seeing none, the board comments, District two?
No.
District three? Treasure, court clerk, Cesar? And I'll just say thanks, guys, for participating yesterday and meeting for a couple hours. Really appreciate everybody's time. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Sir, adjourn.
Got a motion, saying to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let's have it, for adjourn.